We're not classification of setbacks. Any seconds?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Erickson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. So, the public hearing is open on the setbacks of the clarification of setbacks on the wind ordinance. I would like to start by stating the way the ordinance is right now, there are three, I believe it is, different setbacks in different areas. From an administrative standpoint, as far as enforcement, in my opinion, it leaves it open for a lot of interpretation. On page six, it states three times the tip height for wind energy commercial systems or conversion systems. Then on, and that's from property line or road right of ways. On page eight, it says nearby building sites. It states two times the minimum setback for landowners where the proposed test facility will be located. It's a test facility. And then on page 11, commercial wind energy conversion systems, it says a setback, the minimum setback from any property line of a non-participating landowner or any road right of way shall be no less than four times the tip. So, I can see different situations that would ensue a lot of conversation and interpretation. And if you were one wanting to build one and put them in, I'm sure you could construe it at two times. I would like to see, I would like to see it uniform across the board personally. That's from an enforcement standpoint. At this time, I will open it up to the planning commission for comments and then we'll open it up to the floor for those that wish to speak in favor of and then ones that wish to speak in opposition to before we actually make a motion. So, Donna, Bill?
I don't have anything, no.
No additional comments. I can see where there is some confusion about setbacks. Confusion of setbacks. And that probably needs to be clarified.
I'm with you. Okay. We do not have recommendations on the floor, but does anybody wish to speak in favor of the way the ordinance is right now? Does anyone wish to speak? Yeah. Your name, please.
Norman Hawkins.
Can you sign this sign?
Please, yeah, please sign in.
I have. If I understand it right, the ordinance as it is has greater setbacks than the change would allow. In other words, like three times the distance going to two times the distance. Do I understand that correctly?
You've got to ask that question again. I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Is the change that's being proposed to make the setbacks less in distance?
There is no proposal yet.
Perhaps I misunderstood and if you are going to make a proposal on that, then I would have something to say about that. But I would say something related to the whole topic. And that is, is I under, I moved up here really permanently two years ago. This is going to be my permanent home, God willing, forever. And I do, I do want to just say that as I understand the wind ordinance itself, it was passed in February of 2021. Almost no one knew about it. We sure didn't know about it. Even, I checked the River Valley shopper, May 30th, I thought there was going to be a notice of hearing for this meeting in that. That was my understanding. It's not there in the River Valley shopper on the May 30th, their 31st edition.
Right there. May 30th. May 10th, I'm sorry.
If we're in for three weeks.
The one that I just looked at, it wasn't there. And my whole point on this is this is an incredibly important issue. It's going to affect Pearson Township forever. And my suggestion is, why not put something this important on the ballot and let the people vote about it so everybody can do it? And if everybody in Pearson Township wants to have the windmills, you know, that's a wonderful thing then and let it be. But in the absence of it being publicized really so everybody knows about it, because frankly, I talked to quite a lot of people, nobody knew about it, all right? I think that, you know, just fundamental fairness, this is a democracy, would indicate that, let's put it on the ballot. Everybody can vote and everybody can decide because there are negative health effects. There are negative health effects to it. It's going to affect property owners in an adverse way unless the property owners have a windmill on their property. And I've heard of places over in the east where it's happened and lo and behold, the township supervisor had three windmills on his property and other landowners don't. I don't know what's going to happen here, but I just think as an overall perspective, it should go on the ballot. Everybody has a chance to vote and decide. It's publicized so everybody knows about it. That's what I would have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I admit, I wasn't in Pearson Township any of February, so I'm sorry I missed your public hearing. Jim knows I go to Florida. This is, I agree with the prior speaker, this is a very serious change to Pearson Township. I don't know what the tallest structure is in Pearson Township right now. It might be besides that tower. Where'd it go? There it is, you see? But, you know, this ordinance allows for wind towers 500 feet tall. 500 feet, 50 stories. Think about that in Pearson Township. 50 stories. So, many of us have driven I-65 in Indiana and seen how that landscape has changed with those wind towers. Spectacular in a sense, but certainly changed greatly for the residents of that area. And I did a little research, Google search, and those towers are 380 feet tall. For some reason, the Pearson Township proposed ordinance says 500 feet, nearly a third taller.
But that, excuse me, that's not the proposed ordinance, that's already the ordinance. So, the proposed ordinance has, this ordinance is already ordinance.
Yeah, Dan?
Yeah.
So, the only thing we're talking about tonight is setbacks.
Okay, so has the Pearson Township Board approved the wind ordinance?
They have. They have. We started, we started. Time out. Time out. You want to listen or not? Two people are talking, no one's listening.
Let's listen to the township supervisor. Go ahead, Dan.
The planning committee has been working on this ordinance since last year. Every meeting has been publicized. Every hearing has been publicized. We can't drag people, we have Facebook, we have our webpage, we have publications. We have done our level best to let people know what's going on. It has not been until all the controversy east of here has blossomed that the intention is now on us. We have what we feel is a good ordinance and we're not, we're now talking about some amendments to clarify some language on it because they, there weren't some alignments and some setbacks. So, I hear what you're saying, but I mean, we have done our due diligence. I don't know what more we can do other than this posting, that posting, and, oh, and the postings on the, on the doors. Everything has been.
We're only talking about setbacks.
Absolutely, because, because the ordinance has been passed. We have approved it.
So, that tells me that the planning commission and the township board believes that this ordinance can be amended. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. So, my suggestion is that the township board look at this very carefully because you've got an ordinance that allows 500-foot towers, much taller than the Indiana wind farm which dominates that landscape. So, that's an amendment you should consider. Another amendment you should consider is exempting the Lake Residential area because I can't figure out how 50-foot by 300-foot lot would allow a so-called exempt structure. It already is. Pardon me? It already is.
Everything west of Old Northland Drive.
We have a wind zone. No, there's an exempt, and that's what I was concerned about. There is on page, page six F, exempt towers and wind energy conversion systems are allowed at a farm, home, or business that don't involve the sale. Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Don't involve the sale of electricity. So, basically, we're talking about home generation systems. Those are allowed in any and all residential districts by the ordinances was passed. And it's right there on page, it's section F on page six. And that allows, and this is anywhere in the township, says any zoning district, says that it's allowed in any zoning district, which would include the very small lots in Lake Residential. It also allows a tower of 130 feet, not 500 like the commercial area east of federal, east of Northland, whatever you call it, east of Old 131. But it allows 130-foot tall tower anywhere in the township. So, again, we have that in your neighbors. Now, there is a side setback requirement. That's what the amendment that is being considered by the planning commission and the planning commission may recommend an amendment tonight to the township board. But I'm telling you that if you weren't aware that you can build wind towers and, excuse me, the ordinance is, I might comment on that. If I would have seen, even in Florida, if I would have seen that there was a wind tower ordinance on the agenda, that would have, I think, gained a lot more of my personal attention and perhaps this group as well than a wind, ineptly named wind ordinance. So, another thing I would change is the name of the ordinance when you're amending it. As to the specific item that the planning commission is considering tonight, the side setbacks, the, because in the commercial area east of Old 131, it's four times, four times. So, if the tower's 500 feet tall, it must be 2,000 feet from any lot line. 130-foot tall tower which is allowed anywhere in the township, I believe, should be four times from a lot line. So, we don't have the effect, what I call the church steeple on your property line effect where it's towering over you. So, to get back to your point, sir, as you consider the ordinance tonight, what this public hearing is, I strongly urge that you amend the ordinance to provide across the board four times, four times, the top tower whether 130 feet or 500. And Dan, I urge you as township supervisor to seriously consider renaming this ordinance and understanding it so that everybody on the township board understands that 130-foot towers can go on any parcel that's big enough anywhere in the township. So, and there may be other amendments as these good people suggest as we proceed through the public hearing. But amending an ordinance after it's passed in township government is entirely possible. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here at all. Thank you for the time and for listening.
Well, I would just like to comment on his four times. I don't care if it's six times. I don't want to hear it. I don't want to see it. What they say is if you can hear it, you can see it, your property value drops 30% your resale, at least, maybe more. And so, I don't want that windmill anywhere near my property. I don't care if it's six times, 10 times. I don't want to see it. I don't want to hear it. I moved up here for the beauty of the area, the peace and quiet. I don't want to hear a windmill.
And what was your name?
Leanne Briggs. And I signed in.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Davis. Does anybody know how tall the tower is? To my recollection, it's like 230 or 250 feet. And anybody know how far away that is from here? Nobody know how many feet? Okay. So, you're talking 250 times, how many feet per wind turbine turbine?
Right now, it's four.
So, anybody want to know?
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the proposal?
My name is Carol Hubbard and I did sign in. I guess I have points in favor and in opposition to, but as the current ordinance stands, I would be in favor of retaining what's there for setbacks, at least for the commercial portion. So, the wind farm portion is at four times. Is that correct? Yeah. I would be in favor of leaving that as it is. I'd be in favor of making it more times, but I would be in favor of four times. And the ordinance as written says it's here to protect the health and safety of the residents as well as the environment and the surroundings. And the most we can do to help protect everybody is to have the greatest setbacks as possible. We've already seen on the east side of the state where people have health effects from the wind farms that are there, Grasset County. People are moving away and their property values are declining. Those are facts from Grasset County. So, I would appeal to all of you to do the most you can do when you consider these setbacks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Gearlicks. Address is 3319 Pecky Road, Pearson. I want to start by expressing my personal thanks to our planning commission as well as to the board of Pearson Township for serving our community, forgiving of your time, of your lives, as the Declaration of Independence would put it. That is not something that we can replace or give back to you. And I think the wind ordinance has been a pretty intense issue and I just want to say thank you for serving us and for giving us this opportunity to let our voices be heard. I grew up here in Pearson Township. My family and I love living here. We love the rural setting, the neighborliness. We are in favor of the original setback, four times height limits in the ordinance. From the maps that I've seen, our home is surrounded by build sites and we don't have a lot of properties, so those setbacks are really our only cushion. With the research that we've done, our greatest concerns right now are property value depreciation and noise and health and safety with the hooker and blade drop failure. And those things are all well documented. We live in an area that's known for straight line winds. Michigan gets tornadoes, we get storms and, you know, with residential buildings, vehicles, and people living in the area, I think that's just a very high risk. We realize, of course, people and nature can be very adaptable to changes and to new structures coming into the environment, but there are many well documented evidences of harmful effects for the entire community, not just for the participating property. And once that turbine is in place, it's not a simple or easy solution to fix some of those, some of those problems that might result. I really think that needs to be taken very seriously for the sake of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the record, my name is Robert Scott. We actually live in Sidney Township, but we've been very involved in the efforts to maintain ordinances, provide ordinances that have the responsible placement of wind turbines in our, in our entire county. First of all, I'd like to commend the planning commission and the board for the ordinances in place. Many of us see your ordinance as being the gold standard for wind, responsible wind energy ordinances. You've done a lot of really, really good things. I'm hoping tonight that you don't draw back from that because that's what you'd be doing by making the changes you have proposed. Right now, your ordinance, your ordinance provides for four times from non-participating properties and from roads right of way. That ought to be the standard. If you want to make, if you want to have some uniformity in your ordinance, make that the standard. As other people have already pointed out, 500-foot wind turbines are really, really tall. If you want to see what a 500-foot wind turbine looks like, just drive Carson City and you'll see 60 of them right east of Carson City. And you can see 20, 30 of them at a time by just sitting in one spot. And that's what you're asking, that's what you're going to allow in terms of height here. But the one thing you can do to preserve the density is to include a major setback, four times is a major setback. To give you another idea of what, what 500 feet is like, 500-foot turbine is taller than the tallest building in 19 states. 19 states. They have no buildings that are 500 feet tall. City of Grand Rapids has no buildings that are 500 feet tall. The tallest building in Grand Rapids is just over 400 feet tall. If you drive up to the Mackinac Bridge and you can see the towers of the Mackinac Bridge, you can see them from many, many miles away. They're 525 feet tall. These are huge structures. And to make them any closer than you already have in your ordinance would be a shame. Let me just talk, give you one document that you might find interesting. This is a map of Maple Valley Township that the people at Apex produced. And if you read the caption at the bottom, this is their effort to show where they might be able to put wind turbines in Maple Valley. And obviously, you should be concerned about Maple Valley because it's right next door. And you'll see from that map, there are green areas that are right next door to Pearson Township. Well, this map is made on the presumption that they're going to have 670-foot wind turbines in Maple Valley Township. It's made on the presumption that the setbacks will be 1.5 times tip height based on this map. That's what they'd like to see. And that's what they're going to push you for to do if you, if you, if you waiver one bit on the ordinance you have right now. You're going to hear it from Mr., I see Mr., the younger one is here tonight to probably talk to you about sound and setbacks and all sorts of things, but don't give in. Don't give in to them one inch. You'll regret it. I guarantee you, you'll regret it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Bennett and I'm from Douglas Township. I'm a non-participating landowner. I own tons of land that I have worked my butt off. It's been in our family for years and years. We have it in quite a few different townships. And if you guys propose any closer setbacks in four times, they're going to be ruining my property. When you put a turbine on the edge of somebody's property and it's only one and a half times setback from my house, my house is ruined and then my property, 45% of the degree of that property is useless. So, if I have a 20-acre property over here that I've deeded to my son or decided I'm going to let him build a house there on the lake, he can't build. So, your setback, if it's not long enough or far enough away, is endangering everybody that has not signed up, that is not going to get the monthly money, that's not going to be decided to take that, that grant. Because some of us don't want to ruin our neighbor's property, our neighbor's lives, our neighbor's health, and our neighbor's well-being. I know for a fact, I would go work three jobs before I'd put a turbine on my property just to screw my neighbors over. You know, most people have to get permission to put a pig farm. A pig farmer has to go get permission from mom and neighbors to put a barn up because it stinks. But not one person has to come around and say, hey, the seven of us around you are going to put up turbines because we just decided that's how we're going to live our life for the rest of it on our retirement. And screw you, we don't really care if you want one or not. So, if you put a one and a half, or a two and a half, or a three and a half, or anything that's so close to my property line that is deemed useless and my health is in jeopardy, my cattle don't reproduce, my dogs who I've bred for 20 years are all over the country don't produce because it sounds awful. You know, my lake, all my eagles disappear, all the wildlife disappears, all my life that I have worked my ass off and paid taxes on is down the drain because somebody decided they wanted to come in and say, it's a great idea to put these green energy. It's not green. I can put a 60-foot tower on my house and my own wind and generate my whole entire farm. I can put solar panels on my house and generate my farm, but nobody's going around giving us grants for them. They're just telling us we need to come in and put these turbines and then industrial cement park. If you go up to other townships, there is no schools that have any kids in them anymore. They're 45% empty. The teachers leave because they can't get a job because there's no children. There's nobody playing in the yard anymore. There's no communities. They've divided this person against that person and this township against that township. It is awful. And you need to have great setbacks. Your ordinance is amazing. I commend you guys. I know what a headache this has been. It blew everybody in the face. We had no idea that one little dinner, one little time with Apex Ale back there would cause all this, you know, this commotion. I give you guys 100% credit for thinking of your citizens and you need to just keep doing it. Health, welfare, and safety.
Anyone?
My name's Dwayne. I live up here on Maple Hill Road, just north of Kenville, have for 30-some years. We enjoy it here. We enjoyed raising our families here. And I know that it's already adapted. I didn't hear about it till like six weeks ago, eight weeks ago. You know, and I know that you guys in the government side did what you were supposed to do, but why is everybody here today? Because we all didn't know about it. We would have been here. I would have been here. I want it back as far as they can. Fortunately for me, I'm on this side of federal, Old 131, whatever you want to call it, but I'm only a half mile, a quarter of a mile. If they put them up just on the other side of federal, it's going to, it's going to ruin my sunrise every morning. I know that the setback should be as far back as it can physically be and don't waver from that. We were hoping that we might be retiring here. You know, I don't like the, the looks of these. I don't think that it's, you know, in my personal humble opinion, I believe it's going to ruin Montcom County and its beauty. Because right now, people that live here, live here because it is agriculture. Wind turbines are commercial. How does commercial go on to agriculture? I mean, I'm not educated enough in that area to know how a commercial entity is coming on agricultural land. You know, that's something that I probably should be getting a better education on myself. But, apologize for that. Spam. I just want to say, you know, you guys have done a good job and it's one of those things that, move it to another county. Don't take away from the beauty that is here. And that is something in my drive back and forth around this county that's going to forever change and it's going to be like, well, you know, and that's why I'm standing here. Please make it rough. They're going to be here, they're trying to get in, they're going to sell it and leave and leave a wake of what I call civil war mentality, neighbor against neighbor. And it's been mentioned before, you know, township against township, why? If it, unless you're benefiting from it financially, it makes no sense why. If it, unless you're benefiting from it financially, it makes no sense why they're here. Let's find some rivers that we can put some, you know, hydro plants on because that's flowing all the time, you know? But that's just my humble opinion. And I just want to say, please do what you can to keep the setback as far back as you can so that people like me that want to live here don't have to leave. Thank you.
I've already signed in. My name is Laura Wiltz and, um, we're one of the lake folks up here. Um, and I understand where these are going to be. Um, just to give you a perspective, my grandparents and my mom cleared our lot in 1946. That's how long I've been a part of Pearson Township. It's grown, but yet when we drive here, just those 20 minutes from Grand Rapids, it's like my kids got to go step back in time. Um, they grew up here catching frogs and going to the market and dirt roads and everything that makes this place so special. And honestly, this is probably where we'll end up retiring, my husband and I eventually. I also want to bring to your attention, and I appreciate very much, you've run your ads into the River Valley Shopper, you've done due diligence as you need to, and I appreciate your work on this. I sit on the board for Big Whitefish Lake as well. However, I will say that I work for Am Life Media Group and I'm very, very in tune with the news, with what's going on, with what's being published, with what public notices are out there. And unless somehow or another in the last 12 months, I was living under a rock, I didn't see any of this. I work in the news industry and I didn't see any of this. I think that it's sad that Pearson Township is targeted for this because it's a beautiful place. Look around you at the people you live near. It's a beautiful place. If we have to do this, which it sounds like it's too far gone that we have to do this, I beg you to keep the setbacks as far as you can. Four times is not even enough, in my opinion. I would rather have you really look at this and take into the account that I think that is, I mean, how many people in this community that are sitting here with me actually knew about this before it was passed? Raise your hand if you knew about it. I don't think your percentage is very high with the folks that you reached out to. And I apologize for that because I know you're doing your job and I appreciate you and your, your, it's, it's a hard position you're in. But I ask very much that you reconsider this and think about what we're giving up if we do this. That's it.
I'm Kathy Ernst and I just would really like you guys to listen to what everybody said tonight. Four setbacks is a minimum. What's going to happen to this township, what's going to happen to our county is going to affect us for 30 years. It's going to affect our kids, our grandkids, our great-grandkids. And I think there's a majority of people that are speaking against us and I really hope that you'll consider the four setbacks. Thank you.
My name is Jeremy Quayco. I'm from Cato Township. Um, you guys got a good showing here. Um, there are a lot of complaints about a lack of information with this. Um, but, uh, you have people here now, most of these are, all of them are neighbors. Um, I know you guys have friends out here, probably have some family. Um, this is something that really divides a community and it'd be nice for the record, is there anybody here who actually wants to see turbines in Pearson Township or Montcom? Two, three, four, five? Well, that's good. I'd double it and give you 10. 10 out of 70 though is still a significant minority. Um, and obviously nobody wants to speak up about it and I'd almost assume because of the division this brings to the community. I, I really hope you guys take in consideration, um, the people that are here, the voices, these are your neighbors. Um, and it'd be really irresponsible to change what you have. There's a lot of people that were happy with the work you guys did, um, and really see this as being deceptive to change a good thing. And that's it.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Sally Campice. Um, we've been on Big Whitefish Lake for 40 years. My family has. I want to thank you for your work. I knew nothing. None of us knew anything about this like everyone else. I'm retiring this year. I am elated. I get to move to our cottage. When I sit out in the morning, I love everything about it except highway noise. But, you know, we all use highways. We don't have a choice. I can't imagine the noise that will be generated. I'm an RN. I worry for children with autism, those with seizure disorders, others whose health will be negatively impacted, all because somebody thinks they can make money by putting wind turbines here. I have no idea even why this is being considered. To me, I can only think of negatives. I have not heard anything positive and I worry that 20 years from now, or 10 years from now, when the technology of this giant wind turbine or turbines is outdated, what happens then? I worry for the noise. I worry for the eagles that I see feeding over the lake every day. I worry that somebody wanting to make money is going to negatively impact this beautiful area in a way that can never again be recovered. I ask, I know it's too late, supposedly, too late, to have the ordinance changed back. I'm very sad at that, very sad. However, I would encourage you very, very strongly to look at the height being allowed in this ordinance, 500 feet. To me, that's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. And I would encourage you to consider an amendment to lower that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see all these people from Pearson Township against the wind turbines, but they own an acre or two of land and they're trying to control the person that's got, got lots of land, an acre. Well, I got land, yeah, I like to have a turbine on it. Hey, I agree with my, with these people sitting here on Whitefish Lake, Baptist Lake and one, huh? And they only own an acre, two acres and they're trying, trying to control the farmer out there that's got all kinds of acres. And I think they should have wind turbine turbines. Maybe they could have them a little lower? I don't know. But I do know these people have an acre or two to build a house on. And they want to control this farmer that's got hundreds of acres. Only one vote. I have something to think about. Thank you.
Okay, let's not get into it.
We're, we're, we're not going to have cross-talks. Our sheriff will remove you from the property. We're going to have respect for everybody. Got it?
Okay, anyone else wish to speak?
Sorry, can I? Sorry, I'm sorry. Help us be a minute. I just, I wasn't really going to talk. I'm from Douglas, but I have to respond to that, I guess, because we have several hundred acres and we are not leasing. We would not do that to our neighbors. Our neighbors are trying to do that to us. They never talk to us. Um, and I don't know why you would ever want to do that to our neighbors. It's all about safe setbacks though. You know, also in, um, Douglas Township, Jay Township, um, those townships around there, there's three huge potato growers that owns thousands of acres. None of them are leasing because they're not going to do that to their neighbors. So, um, it's all about safe setbacks. If you want to be consistent, then four times the prop, the tip height and don't let them tell you that you need to go to the occupied building because that creates trespass zoning. If you, that, if you say it's only to my house, then that makes the rest of my, my property undevelopable. So, you know, it's not only people with, with one acre that aren't leasing. There's lots of farmers and other landowners all over this county that are not going to do that to their neighbors. Thank you. I've already signed in.
With all due respect to Mr. Earl here, um, I own 40 acres in Pearson Township. Two years ago, my husband and I decided to make Pearson Township our home. We purchased 40 acres, which now is in the wind zone. We built a, a home. We brought a lot of tax money to Pearson Township and we're very concerned that the surrounding acres now, now that are around my 40, that people own that don't live in Grand Rapids now can have these turbines on them, which would then make my property value go down that my husband and I have worked our whole lives to build and to bring up here to this township. So please, four times the setback on, on all of the distances. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Scott Hubbard. I live in Pearson Township. I live on Big Whitefish Lake. I have almost 80 acres and I wouldn't do that to my neighbors.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm, uh, Steve Mattson. I better put my name down there, huh? I was sitting back here, uh, listening to everything and I do know you guys did your due diligence, but you've really got hornets nest here. I'm a big time hornet's nest here. And it seems to me, just sitting back there listening, you're pushing through something where you've got a major problem, where you have not communicated well, which you've tried everything you can, but you have not communicated well with the people. Everybody has heard this after, most of us have heard about it afterwards. And, uh, everybody says it's too late, it's in the process. Is it?
No.
I ask you, as being supervisor, can you not bring this back up and readdress it, table it, and find out what everyone wants? It has not gone to pot without taking what the people want. I'm, I'm, I'm just asking you a question.
Well, I'm going to answer it. If you're asking me a question, I'll, I'll answer it. How do you communicate when you're doing all you can? Doesn't the public have an opportunity to look and, and, and try to get involved? I, I mean, I, I mean, it, let's, they've been working on this for over a year, over a year in public meetings. I, I mean, I have a hard time saying, we didn't do our due diligence. The public didn't do their due diligence either. So you come up with a solution that's not going to cost the, you want us to do mailings? Give me the stamp, give me the envelope and I'll, I'll mail you everything. You're in media? Help us. Help us.
Can I speak?
Sure, help us.
If I'm in media, I'd be more than happy to help you and I am, I'm with Am Life. But I also would say that, welcome to the party. We all woke up. Now's the time to have the conversation. I'm sorry you have a hearing for this, but don't go on to the finish line. Now's the time to discuss this.
Like you, I've been to the meetings a ton, maybe one or two people on your average.
I thought we had to get on a jail free card.
Right. Most, I mean, most people do not come to your meetings. It's, let's face it, everybody, it's, it's not important to us, except for when it affects us. And we heard it late and now we're reacting. And I'm just saying right now, now that you know, is there any ways of putting on the brakes to actually find out what the people want? Now you know, you know, you're hearing some stuff here, it's actually, put the brakes on, don't keep on pushing through this because you have opened up a hornet's nest and it's only going to get worse if it continues. And that, I'm not threatening or anything, I'm just saying, now you see it, there's some way to put the brakes on to this and hold it for a bet, get more input from people, from the people who want it, people who don't want it, and then make an educated decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm thinking, um, we found out about it in April and we got to Zoom in on a meeting at the last minute. After that, even though there was an emergency order still in Montcom County, you canceled the Zoom meetings. But you have to realize this happened during COVID. Who came to a town meeting during COVID?
It did not start in COVID.
Yeah, but, but I'm just saying it happened, this February decision happened during COVID, didn't it?
After a year of meetings it did, yes.
Okay, but yet no one knew anything about it and also no one, I, I mean, I lived in other.
We could do more.
Can I, can I talk? I've lived in communities where people, the, the people wanted their residents to know what's going on. They made efforts. The River Valley Shopper is not your, it used to come toward my door, even though I hardly read it. It doesn't come to my door anymore. I have to go to the gas station to pick it up. That's not a, a means of communication. I'm sorry, it doesn't count. It doesn't count. People don't even go in that store possibly, let alone know that that's their means of communication, let alone stop at the library. I don't even know where the library is and look on the door to see when the meetings are. That's what they told me. Check the River Valley Shopper or look at the library door for meetings. Who would even think about that? Now that, to me, that's not exercising your due diligence to try, maybe that worked for 20 years, but that doesn't happen nowadays. It doesn't work. Communication, I mean, you send out taxes, don't you? Like taxes? That comes in the mail when you want money and it comes through the mail. You could have a note about something, this is a big thing, obviously.
Do you have a comment on setbacks? That's what we're talking about.
I'm, I'm, I'm commenting on the communication about setbacks and that the communication about setbacks was very inadequate. And that as much as due diligence is a word, it's not a reality. And I seriously have spoken to people word of mouth over the last month and literally many of the people that are here knew about it because I spoke about it word of mouth, not because of any due diligence that was on any part of the commission or the, of any, anyone else.
Uh, Pat Merrick, family's owned the farm since 1893. Probably outweighed a lot of these people, a lot of taxes. Um, I, I just getting to the point, 4,000 feet across the board, I think, bare minimum. I know you can't change much, you got it in place. You guys were looked up across this whole county. I work in Greenville. Every day I went in there, did you see what Pearson did? Did you see what they did? And everybody was looking at this board, looking at this four-time setback, saying, wow, they did something great. I, I think four, four times across the board, bare minimum. I live with Steve's most headache. I think Jim does too.
Oh, yes.
Let's not make another mistake like that.
One little hummer.
Yeah, you can hear that humming all the way to the other side of Howard City. These things, I have friends in Willpeere, 1,200 feet away from their house, they cannot go outside and enjoy the outdoors anymore. They had to get rid of all of their livestock because abortion rate was so high they couldn't even afford to have. So 4,000, let alone water. I think these are 40 feet down. My well's 63, cement and Michigan ground, doesn't last very long. Leaching into our water well, which isn't replaceable, I think is another, you know, 4,000 hopefully keeps it away, let alone the lube that is dropping from them. I mean, I don't know, I have heard sometimes they go as far as 60 feet in the ground. I got a 63-foot well, that gives me three-foot barrier hoping something doesn't go down in there. I don't know if anybody's even thought about that. Water isn't as plentiful anymore as it used to be. So, hey, I appreciate what you guys do. I know it's a hard job. I've been on 4H Council, I've been on all kinds of different things. You're like a target. So, uh, but yeah, I, I, four times across the board, bare minimum, if you can't make it longer. You know, I, I, you know, I got enough acreage, I could put two or three on here, but it would ruin a lot of neighbors. And neighbors are worth more than money.
My days, my work. My days, my working days, working on a pandemic, of which we have never seen the effects. I'm in the laboratory business, so we have focused on testing, and my husband is a dental professional. And while you did due diligence, and I realize we are here to discuss the setback, you need to understand that our community has never experienced anything like what we have, and we have worked our tails off trying to support our first responders, our community, and our patients. And we really were not focused on what was going on in our government. And that is not an excuse, but it is a reality. So I support what you're doing. I support your effort to keep that setback as big as you can, but I do think you're going to change this community forever, from a health perspective, from a beauty perspective, and I ask you to reconsider. I highly recommend, because people will leave, and that saddens me. It's a beautiful community with wildlife and unbelievable, I think, just very positive people. We want to be here, but we aren't going to be here if it's an unhealthy choice. Thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
I wanted to put up one more comment about the setbacks.
As you do four times, but what people forget is that there are huge power lines. It's not just those wind turbines, it's those huge power lines all over the place, too, to carry that electricity. And you're gonna look at that, and there's gonna be property, you're gonna be on somebody's property, too, as well.
The board has signed in. My name is Stephen Poulsen. I live on Kimball Road in Maple Valley Township, but my wife and I own property here in Pearson Township. And I think four times back is, four times a setback is too restrictive. At an earlier township meeting, it was stated that you wouldn't write an ordinance so restrictive as to interfere with interstate commerce. And I think then, it takes a lot of acres if you had it four times back. And I, our property couldn't be any further from these lakes than still being in Pearson Township. And I just think that four times is too much. Also, I have some signatures here of people that support this comment, I'd like to hand in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael Julian again, Daggett Road. To clarify something I said earlier, I reread what I said about exempt structures, so-called non-commercial structures. They are allowed in every zoning area, if they're connected to a farm or a home or whatever, but it's not solely private use, it's just primarily private use. So again, we could have a commercial structure throughout the township. Commercial in the sense, primarily as ordinarily defined in the law, as more than 50%. And so therefore, you could have someone, your neighbor, with 130-foot tower, not the ones east of Old 131, but you could have 130-foot tower and your neighbor selling 49% of the electricity they generate to somebody else, and you gotta listen to it and look at it. So that's my clarification. To my neighbors who are on the township board, I suggest you strongly consider a one-year moratorium on this. Quickly pass an amendment to put a one-year moratorium. A full-size home, and these are the 380-foot towers, not the 500-foot towers in Pearson Township over there, these are the shorter 380-foot towers in Indiana. And it dwarfs, it engulfs, it miniaturizes that home and everyone around. And so that's the reason for a moratorium. This can't happen in Pearson Township. It can't happen. So, I think, I sure done this planning commission, and a planning commission and township board in another township before we established full-time residents here. I've been here since I'm 15, and some of you probably figured out that's a while ago. But my residence was in the Grand Rapids area. Anyway, the planning commissions are hard work, because there's always two sides to every story. Planning commissions have statutory requirements, and this planning commission and this township board has followed those statutory requirements. But those are the minimums. Communication goes beyond the statutory requirements. And so that's why I'm asking, is communicate with our community about what this wind farm looks like. Communicate with our community about what 130-foot tower in residential areas looks like. And let the township talk to you, Dan, and to Sarah, and to your colleagues on the township board, and explain what they want. Because it ain't gonna be this. Well, with the setbacks, it wouldn't... What?
Perhaps not.
No, you know what?
Yeah.
That's clarifying, you know what?
But 500 feet. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yeah.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up, and I really have a question more, but I'm just wondering how many property owners have already entered into contracts with Apex, if any, or have been promised that there would be wind turbines on their property that they own or have interest in. I just throw that out, and again, I support, actually, what Mike Julian said, I think there should be a moratorium placed on it, and really, given the importance of the issue. It affects all of us, and if there is a public vote at an election, and it's voted in, wonderful, I'll go along with it. But in the absence of that, and it is such a divisive issue, okay, even elections can be divisive, but they will be a lot less divisive than this, and I just think there is every reason to put it on the ballot next time around, so that everyone in the community, as with all election issues, has an opportunity to vote on this and any amendment to it. Thank you.
In favor of the first hour?
We haven't had the other side of the speaker.
I'm happy to wait, if you want to wait till people want to talk about in support of changing some setbacks, I'm happy to wait. Just to say my comments for that.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Your name?
I'm Albert Young Award, and I work with the Wind Project. And so, I guess first off, I want to just maybe make a kind of a general announcement. We are having a Q&amp;A session, and a lot of questions get asked to the board. The board doesn't necessarily have answers about our project. So I'm working on the project, we are having Q&amp;A sessions that we will hold throughout the county, starting actually here in Pearson Township on Tuesday, the 8th, I believe. I believe that's confirmed. If it's not confirmed, well, it is. Okay, see, let's see it end up. So on Tuesday, the 8th, for anyone who would like to come out and talk to us about the project, I've heard a lot of things tonight that didn't connect with what we're actually doing, so there's a lot of hearsay about what's going on. We'll open the doors here on Tuesday, the 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Please come talk to us. Now, we don't bite. A lot of people put certain words in my mouth, but we're here to try to answer questions. So that's a general statement. I guess, so, specific to setbacks, I did share, and I brought a couple maps I'll share with the board, but one thing that I think is important that's kind of been mentioned here tonight, there's talk about increasing the setbacks because of property rights. Well, every time there's talk of increasing the setbacks, we're actually talking about taking away someone else's property rights. And so the setbacks exist for a reason. There's safety, there's a visual aspect, there's a number of reasons why you may have setbacks. That all makes sense. But you have setbacks to a house, to protect somebody's quality of sleep, quality of life, setbacks not participating property lines, to respect someone's use of their own property, setbacks to roads, because, well, setback to a road may be perhaps a safety setback in the case of a collapse or something of that nature. But they all have different purposes and different reasons. And so I think the questions that you guys are asking do make a lot of sense. They seem to be fair questions to ask. And when there's a talk of increasing setbacks universally across the board, really, what people are asking is to say, because of my personal interest in whatever it may be, I'm asking you to take away my neighbor's property rights. The gentleman, I believe, is getting in his car right now, kind of spoke to this effect. There's a certain, there's only a certain portion, as the board knows, and hopefully the community knows as well, there's only a certain portion of the township that's actually even possible for consideration for development. People have rights who live east of federal also. They also have land rights. And so when it comes to setbacks, I would ask that you don't take away their land rights, and I'm sure they would feel the same. If they choose to participate in a project, they work the land, they live there, they pay taxes, just like everybody else does. So they also have a fair right to the use of their land, and I don't think it's the right approach to governance or regulation to strip them of their property rights because of someone else's... Could be an emotional response to not wanting to look at wind turbines or what have you, but that's the consideration I wanted to put out there. Now, the maps, I don't know what map Mr. Scott passed out. He did not get it from us. We actually have a map here that shows the area. I've got three maps that I'll share with the board. A map that shows the area where, east of federal, where land could potentially be considered to get signed. A second map that shows some basic internal setbacks that Apex may just use, for the sake of representing, of just visually trying to represent, if we were to design a project with no rules on the books, east of federal, what land may possibly be considered using the basic physical distance setbacks, not environmental, not sound, not shadow, not federal EPA and federal state guidelines, but just physical distance setbacks. What land might be possible for consideration of development if every acre above 20-acre parcels actually signed up? And then I've got the third map that shows the same thing, using the Pearson Township proposed changes to the setback distances. And what you can see, the whole point of that exercise was to be able to show visually what those distance changes might actually mean in terms of usability, constructability of somebody's private property. Now, not everybody's obviously signed up in the township, but some people have, and some people may continue to sign up. And again, I'll contend that that's their right, so I just wanted to share that with you guys with consideration. I'll leave these with the board, but we'll have these types of maps available next Tuesday on the 8th, so people will like to come and see. But east of federal is the only portion of the township that's actually even being considered for development, and that's per the township, so.
Maps can be made, can't we?
Yeah, we'll have them on Tuesday.
Are you gonna get the information about the Tuesday email?
Okay.
So we, well, I just announced it here publicly, so maybe it'll show up in the newspaper. We have a website, we have a Facebook page, and we have other forms of communication. But I'm here tonight to talk about it.
Honey, it's Joe Hanson, Sidney Township. These people talk about coming in here and all their community base, and then they want to change your setbacks to utilize every little space you have in this township. You have a beautiful township, but they want to throw your setbacks smaller to utilize every little space. They'll use swampland if they have to. That's the way they are. They're not honest people. You can see that in the Daily News. When you talk about the potato farmers in Montcom County and all, they use them to use, hey, they signed up, and that was a lie. They had to get a lawyer to cease and desist because they're using their lies. And that's the way they are. They come in here, they sneak around, everybody's signed farmers up, they can't tell anybody anything because it's a gag order. They don't want people to know, just like you guys. You want to inform people, but people aren't getting informed. They don't want you to. They don't want people to get informed.
Have you got something on setbacks?
Yeah, they want to change your setback, to utilize every little space in this township. It's not right. It's not right to put people in this kind of situation for their health and safety, and as some people spoke, there's somebody with their animals and their breeding and miscarriages happening to their farms. I can't believe Terry Anderson, the way he acts, like he's on board, maybe he isn't, but he has a nice petting zoo, you would think he'd be all against it. I'm not sure if he is or not. These people, they turn around, they lie.
Do you have any individual comments that we haven't already heard?
Yes.
Let him talk!
Hey, I'm talking. It's nice to see you made notes, none of these other people's made notes, but it's nice that you made some notes. Good, thank you. People are making comments here.
But it's getting repetitious. We have heard what you're talking about.
Then maybe I ought to pay attention to the people, instead of interrupting me. People don't want these. They're not good for the health and safety of the environment. They disrupt our property.
Sir, we are talking about setbacks. Talk specifically against that.
No, you're not. We want to change the setbacks, to utilize every little space here. That's what I'm talking about.
Get to the point, you time them, we've got three minutes, sir.
Oh, nobody else had three minutes either, right?
They're following the rules.
Now you're gonna bring up the rules.
I am.
Okay.
I have someone here who will help me enforce them.
Oh, darn it!
You want to enforce it?
Please, be in order and respectful.
Anyways, the setbacks, what he's proposing, he had a private meeting with his township, proposing to change your setbacks, which is wrong.
Who had a private meeting?
Apparently, he packed it.
That is not true.
Asked the boy, where did the rumor come from?
Apparently, he called the rumor.
He did not meet with this. Least out. Anyways, you don't need to change your setbacks. Go farther, shorter. Protect the people in your community. That's what it's all about. The community, these people.
The taxpayers.
Yeah.
It's about the taxpayers. That guy's paid taxes.
And raise a hand, who's for them? Very few. Who's against them? Majority of the people. Majority of the people speaks. That's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Jessica Quakel, I'm from Cato Township. I would just like to say that it would be extremely irresponsible to lower the setback levels, as being a non-participating landowner. We won't benefit from this at all. There's a very small majority of people, minority of people, that will actually financially benefit from this. The rest of us will have to deal with our property values going down. There has not been transparency within the community, as in the entire Montcom community. I live two doors down from Apex's lead land agent. We have had many conversations for years, over the past couple of years, where it would have been a great opportunity to talk to your neighbors about it, but we didn't find out about this until February through Facebook.
Just to be respectful, please.
I appreciate that you guys are taking your due diligence with this. I just really hope that you listen to the community. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Michael Phillips, he'll live on West Van Road.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Michael Phillips. I just want to know what we're agreeing, are you guys amending it to lower it, or are you amending it to keep it the same, the four, or three, or whatever it is?
At this point, we haven't discussed that.
Okay. But is that what we're discussing, lowering it, or keeping it the same?
Actually, what we're talking about, I understand, is that some of these setbacks are in conflict with each other, or at least in gray areas, and we'd like to clean those up.
So which way are you leaning for, cleaning them up? Are you cleaning them up greater or lower?
Stick around, show us at 8:30.
All right.
They will not be less.
Thank you.
Across the board, they won't be less. There may be one less, they may be two or three that'll be more restrictive, but I don't know that. So the board makes a recommendation. And it is a recommendation that will go to the township board, that is not set in stone here.
And in my understanding, it's one, 25 years or whatever these last, Apex takes care of it, because it costs $2 million per turbine, they can ruin it as well, do whatever.
There's a whole host of things involved in that, and we can go into that in greater detail at another time, but they have to provide a bond, it's not a put it up and leave thing.
What if they... What if they do put it up and leave, like 10 years in, and you just want it out of your community?
Essentially, this requires, what we have now, requires an escrow account. The escrow account would clean up and restore the property as it was prior to their arrival, according to what we have in the papers.
Okay, so they just keep on feeding it until it goes on?
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else we wish to speak in reference to setbacks? Anyone else wish to speak on setbacks? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing and reconvene the planning commission. Does the planning commission have?
Motion to close.
Motion, close the planning meeting to public comment.
I'll second it. Close the public hearing.
Right. Close the public hearing and reconvene the planning.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, before I turn that back, there are three areas, in my opinion, and one is on page six. There are three areas that are in question that I would like clarified from an enforcement and administrative standpoint. One of those is on page six, item F, and it talks about the exempt towers that says three times the tip height setback. The second one is on page eight, which is item II, which is section four, talks about nearby building siding, and it talks about two times minimum setback distance for non-participating landowners where the proposed testing facility would be located. And then the third setback that is on page 11, commercial wind energy conversion, item H, number one setback, the minimum setback from any property line of a non-participating landowner or any road right of way shall be no less than four times the tip height. My point for even bringing this public hearing up was to try and get consistency across the board so that it's not administratively difficult to determine on the setback issue for a proposal for a special use application, which is what this would be to come before the planning commission on any wind turbine. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim.
Okay, what we're looking at here is we'd like to clarify these so that we have a single stance as far as what the setbacks are going to be for all three of these areas. Is that what we're looking at?
I would like that.
And that for enforcement purposes, it would clean up any gray areas between the distances as they're listed now, as far as the multiple times. So in essence, what we have currently is four times the distance, and would it clarify this, we went four times the distance on page six and page eight, along with four times on page 11? So they'd all uniformly say four times tip height.
If that's your desire, that would make it...
Trying to clarify what was in the best interest of enforcement.
That would be much easier to determine the setback. And it's not based on, it's not based on 500 feet, it's based on any height. So it could be 200 feet, it could be 800 feet, it still is going to be four times if that was...
Four times tip height, is what we're looking at. Any discussion by planning board?
Confused, we had the four times from in the first place. Do you want to go back and give a little history on the four times, how we came to the four times? Because we had three times.
We can't hear you.
I guess if we're going to have the discussion, why are we, can you give us the history of the four times versus the three times? We had three times in the six, now you want to go to the four times in item six?
The original idea from the four, for the four times, was to protect the non-participating landowner. Originally, it was four times from the dwelling or home, but this was changed to property line and road right of way got put in there too. I'm not sure the reason for that, but the whole idea was to protect the non-participating property owner, which would be true in any zone. Clarified for you? Your question?
No, not really. Because last month, when we talked about this and created the questions, or you talked about multiple things with, from the road dividing participating and roadway, not participating property lines and non-participating property lines, then three times for non-participating and three times for occupied structures, which isn't in here currently. So when we talked about this last month, you brought up that you wanted occupied structures to be more protective than what we had before.
In general.
In general, but now, I'm a little confused as to what direction you really want to go.
There's two issues with occupied dwellings. One, you have participating dwellings, and you have non-participating dwellings. If you go from property line, the non-participating dwelling should not be an issue. Because if you go to the property line, that house is going to be further away than that. The only issue on participating property was if you included all buildings, if you had a, say you had a potato farmer that had, I don't know, several large buildings for potato store. In my mind, they should be outside that zone, that setback.
That's not an occupied structure.
No, it's not. But that's one thing we talked about when deciding not to include that on the participating But there was a differentiation from non-participating property line and road right of way. And I don't remember what you had brought up, or what we brought up on that.
Two times from the roadway, three times from the roadway. So you had two times from the roadway, and then three times from a roadway that divides participating from non-participating.
Part of that, the result of that, is if you go with, right, if you go with the property line instead of to the domicile, inhabited building, whatever, it leaves a gray area between those. So that if you had 200 feet to the property line and 300 to a building, occupied building, what would happen then is, once this took effect, the distance between the property line and the existing house would be unbuildable. And so as a consequence of that, we're revisiting that because it was pointed out, that's a
The whole issue with setback from the property line was to protect that non-participating property from being able, just to get sound right, they would be able to develop any of their property if it goes to the property. That setback would not overlap onto a non-participating property. That was the option. The two differences in the road right of way, I don't necessarily have an issue with that, but we need to protect the non-participating property.
Based on the last month and our previous discussions and whatever, Bill, I think, I'll make a motion to kind of go through how we went through this before, then to amend the setbacks as written in the ordinance, page six, no change. Page eight, three times is removed before adoption to two times, so no change from two times. Page 11, regarding non-participating members, setbacks for occupied structures to three times, two times from a roadway, three times from a roadway dividing participating and non-participating property lines, and then three times for non-participating property lines. That's my motion.
Any second to the motion?
So I got on line eight, would you explain that motion again?
Page eight was the way it already is.
Page eight, he's going to read what the vote is.
I'll second that motion. So you want...
referendum. You've got a referendum.
I just want to make sure. Eight. Just a minute. Page 11, eight, you're saying...
We're leaving occupied structures alone.
So that's on page...
Three times.
Page 11?
Right. Setbacks for occupied structures is three times.
It's four right now.
Right. Three for occupied, no, we don't have occupied structures in there currently.
Okay.
Right?
Setback from the property line is four.
Two times from the roadway, three times from the roadway, so we have two times in the roadway, three times from the roadway dividing participating, non-participating.
Okay, so down now, page 11, right? So what you're saying from the road right of way... Here, guys, we don't have a copy of that and we can't hear you, so come on, this is a public meeting. What are you saying from the road right of way? Let's take these one at a time.
Three times from the road right of way. Dividing participating and non-participating. Three times from...
Okay, so three times from the road right of way.
Dividing participating and non-participating. Two times from a regular roadway dividing participating.
What number? Two.
But that's participating versus participating, which it wouldn't be normally. Any setback between the normal, so that's more restrictive.
Yes. So on page 11, you're saying to separate that out, and...
Occupied structures is three.
Occupied structures is three. You want structures or... Occupied structures of participating property.
That was any occupied structure.
I think we have...
They're speaking, I'm really trying hard to keep up with what they're saying.
Occupied structures.
Okay, well, it's not, you're trying to talk right now, it's their time to have a discussion. And if you want to look at what they're looking at, it's on the website, their wind ordinance is on there, and also the minutes that they are talking about. If you go in there, you can click the link and see it. So I'm sorry.
So you're saying all occupied structures, is that what you're saying? Or are you saying participating?
All occupied structures, that's...
No.
But we still have...
You're saying three times.
Right. We didn't address occupied structures before.
Okay.
And then there's...
Okay, so we have those three things.
Right.
And do we want anything in there on property line, from property line, like it does right now?
Three times for non-participating.
Okay.
Come on, you guys.
From the property line?
So in effect, would that not be a change to the approved ordinance?
This would be a tech amendment.
Who are you going to show up if you're not going to do anything? You know, why hold me?
Just want to make sure we're clear on what you're voting on.
Right, in a second, I'll fill in.
Okay, everybody understand the motion?
But...
Take off, you're bumbling.
Can't hear you.
Okay, as the newspaper, the announcement for this says, so page six, the non-commercial, three times, no change. Eight, page eight, three times is removed before adoption to two times, so there was no change there. The discussion then became on page 11 regarding non-participating members and participating on the roadway. So you wanted to clarify setbacks for occupied structures to three times, which we didn't have in there before, correct? Occupied structures is not there. So we're making this more restrictive on the occupied structure.
No, that's not true.
Two times from a roadway and three times from a roadway dividing participating and non-participating. So if the roadway's participating, dividing participating, it's two times from the roadway. If it's dividing non-participating, it's three times, and then three times for non-participating lot line.
I guess the question that I would have about that is, are we saying from the tower to an occupied dwelling, which is non-participating, three times? Is that what you're... Is that what you're... Okay, now, the question is, and this was the gray area that I thought we needed to address, is if you're going to say that, what about between the house and the property line? Is that unbuildable all of a sudden?
Yes, yes.
Because the property...
So you're going to take away people's rights and say you can't build here because there's a tower over there in your property, we decided you can't build it. You go to property lines, that goes away. If you start talking dwellings, if you want to build another dwelling later on, you can't build it.
You can't do it.
Because it's going to be in the setback.
If people live in their arms, it's too close to the tower.
So the question of the hour is not where the dwellings are, but where the property lines are, because that's where the people's rights begin, at their property line.
That's still just there, Jim. Three times the property line, that's still just there.
At what point?
Three times for non-participating property line.
Yeah, and if it's 700 feet, you're going to go into my lines that far.
So you still have non-participating lot line, three times.
Just...
I can't build on my property then.
Only to, the only thing we can look at and ensure that people can utilize their property is to talk about numbers to the lot line for non-participants.
Yeah.
So three times on the participating, the occupied...
Four, four, every person here said four.
And again, this isn't, you've had other meetings and discussions.
I'm the one that's not selling my soul for the tower, don't lie that close.
Okay, please.
So take the occupied structures out then, period.
Take occupied structures out and put property line in.
Which is already addressed.
I do think we have to address it here.
And take occupied structures out.
Let's do that.
Originally, you wanted to discuss...
Yeah, I hear you. You can end up two feet from my barn if you don't use property lines.
We are using property lines.
Four times. Four times. Go four, not three.
Actually, what it says in the document is four times.
From the property line. Leave it, leave it.
Now, if we were to say three times and pass it to the board, it would be a recommendation on our part to change that. What we need to do, since we have motion...
I'll amend my motion to take out occupied structures then.
Okay, so it would be simply property lines.
Right. To the property line.
It's already been made, the motion's been made.
Motion's been made to change it to three times the height at property lines.
Four.
And the road right-of-ways, three times.
Four, four. You start paying my taxes then.
You don't listen to Apex or your people.
Non-participating.
Folks, I get 25 bucks a meeting, you really think this is a holiday for me? I mean, my wife is at Holton Lake, I came down here just for this meeting, and when I get done, I'm going back. I'm trying to do the best I can for you.
And Jim, we appreciate it.
And I don't think I'm hearing too much in the way of appreciate, 25 bucks, I don't give a shit about. I'm going to burn up 25 bucks going up there and back. I just felt that it was my turn to give back, I've lived in this community 40 years, and I want to watch out for the people in the community. And I try to, and I try to look at all sides. People who have ownership rights that want towers, people who have ownership rights that own property, people don't want to look over there and see a windmill, I understand that, but you're not going to go home and shut your electric off when you get inside the house tonight either.
But we're not getting it from that windmill.
We have a question.
No, the motion's been made, it's been seconded.
We have a question to vote on.
Question to vote on.
Motion to vote on. Anybody got anything else? Ready to vote?
Yeah.
Nate?
Yeah.
Motion is defeated.
Yeah.
My motion, we move the setbacks to property lines, not domiciles, and make it four times as... Across the board.
Page eight, I'm just asking.
And my motion is that we change page eight to four times, page eleven to four times in the document. And it's always...
So on page, on page six, are you moving this to four times too? It was three times.
It was three.
I don't have, just by way of discussion, I don't happen to have a problem with that three times, I don't think there's going to be a lot of independent wind generators popping up all over the countryside here.
So on page six, we're leaving that at three, is that what you're asking for?
Right, so there'd be no change in that.
On page eight, we're changing that to four.
Page eight, we're changing that to four times, and page eleven is going to remain four times as it was in the original document. I think we make it all uniform, there's less paperwork to talk about. I could see, the distance to a road right-of-way is not a huge thing. People are driving by, you know, and it's closer in there, but for the sake of what we've already drawn up in the document, we have four times, and I make the motion that we have it four times in both the article on page eight and also the article on page eleven.
I'll second that.
Voice, Erp, oh, Bill, what's your...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries three, one.